The order for the sound of your cell phones and cameras.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any change in the agenda here?
No change. I motion to approve that agenda.
I'll second. I'll second.
Motion to make a second on the favor.
Alright.
Somebody on the Department of Forest, Dustin?
Good afternoon again.
Yeah.
Dustin Staveson, Oregon Department of Forestry. I think a week ago I was in here, we talked about the forest management plan. He's approved Casey Johnson working on that plan. Gave you update on the MOU with the school district. I think since then, I've seen that the MOU is aligned by both entities, so I think it's in place. So again, let us do our next phase as the management plan is kind of getting developed. And I guess just to touch on that real quick, for some of you, I had numbers, phone numbers for, I gave those, hope that's alright, I gave them to Casey. So he can contact you individually, others, I'm sure he'll be working through Michelle to get those. We kind of came up yesterday with a long list of, oh, fifteen, twenty people that I get to talk to to initially get started on that management plan and maybe some ideas for the future, what it looks like up there. So, the next phase of that was kind of looking at the advisory committee. You know, I think this is totally up to the town on how you want to structure or utilize that committee. You know, I just know that once you get many more uses going on in that eighteen hundred acres, you may, especially with some, there's logging equipment working up there, and you got hikers and bikers and everything else. There's a fair amount of opportunity for conflict between user groups. And so, I think if you can get user groups on the front end of these projects and buying off on how everybody can work together, I think it makes things a lot easier for you. You won't have to pack rooms here telling you, "What in the heck are you doing up there?" As you're already started into some sort of project. So anyways, I don't know that there's anything more that I could provide here, I don't know what you need.
The MOU with the school, sounds like we've been close on that part.
It's done.
It's done, so.
Last meeting.
Yep.
Yep, I pushed it all the way through, Andrew. Everybody's got a copy? We do. Except for you guys.
Everybody has. Just the word.
Except for you guys.
So Casey reached out to me already and I set up time, I think it's next week. Anything you need.
Anything in the next week.
Yeah, so anything you need from us, just let us know. I'm certain that we're ready to see this property before.
One thing I will warn Casey about is don't meet, you cannot meet more than two of these guys at a time.
I probably said my mouth on that.
That's, that.
Be aware of that issue. So I think last week, we talked about the advisory committee some, and that was the impetus of this work session. So I don't know what you guys are all thinking on that, or if there's anything I can do to help do something in place, or.
How many, how many are you looking at?
You know, I, I just, I guess where I'm at is I'm sure one is idea out for you guys. Something that could help you, you all. And so, I don't know that I have any experience with it or ideas on what it would look like. But I know right now, you have the Trails Group up there that has the trails in the forest. You have also the War Mountain Gun Club, not sure how active they are beyond just having the shooting range. But if you start adding in campsite potentially, or more trails, or ATV use, or mountain biking. Seems like maybe there's some other people that could be a part of it.
I think the list you gave us on here is pretty good, but sometimes it's hard to use that residents at large involved in it. But that, we did have a group about ten years ago that did a lot, made the trail and did the, fix the roads and put the rocks around the spring and things. And I'm trying to think of all.
Friends of Bullard Canyon.
Yeah, but I'm trying to think of the people on, I know Jim Wallace was, are still around here. And my husband was, because he's worked for Forest Service a lot, and kind of all that work there. I might ask him if he's interested in. If you can take time off.
Larry Hills.
Pardon me?
Larry Hill.
Larry Hills, yeah, I'm not sure how much he was able to do. He didn't design the trail. Anyway.
Now, so a couple of things you guys want to think about about setting ones up. With an advisory group, you want to make sure you've got a good round, you've got a good cross-section of stakeholders, but you also don't want it so big that you can't.
Alright.
And probably, and the other thing, and you should probably want to set it up with an odd number, so that any advice, it's obviously not binding, but odd numbers tend to give you a, the group has to either come to a consensus or not, as long as it has everybody there. So, those are a few things to think about for setting it up, that it can be constituted. Really no legal requirements as far as who you have on or who you don't, as far as you want to do it. So it's kind of who you guys are interested in hearing from, and whether it's a good cross-section of folks. But they are, again, that, as Dustin has talked about, that these advisory committees and stuff, the way land management is going now is a collaborative approach, where you bring in all the stakeholders and then, some you decide to complain about later on, and then given the opportunity to participate, you don't, then it's kind of too little, too late for legal review and other things like that. It really does help to kind of show that, hey, you know, this is really considered, we're trying to be in there, but also just keeps the peace a little bit. So those are some of the things the council needs to think about. My suggestion is maybe that you may set up a work session before you set this up, and invite the various stakeholder groups and see, you know, make sure everybody gets well apprised of it, and then have all come in and see if various groups maybe want to have one represent, you know, multiple groups, things of that nature. And that may help you get some, but those are just some ideas. This is a pretty open process. The other thing I would mention is we do have a lot of problems filling a lot of the commissions we have, so if you really do want to get people that are committed, this is something that needs probably meaning either a couple of months or at least four months. So it's a, there is a time commitment here, and it is tough to get, even on some of your planning and finance commissions and stuff like that. So those are all concerned.
I guess from a timeline standpoint, you know, I think we, doesn't mean we can't necessarily start some of that sort of activities or projects, you know, in the near term. But it'd be nice to have a, I think it'd be nice to have that management plan in kind of a draft form by the time we start identifying what's the first or second steps we want to take out there. From whether it's a recreational standpoint or just a management standpoint. So, I guess in my mind, where I'm going is, I think by summer, you know, June, July, depending on that timeframe, and how busy it gets, it'd be nice to get folks together. Kind of the first meeting of the group and lay it out, and where, what are some of the ideas and where things are maybe going. To the end, that'll give them some time to think about things for a couple of months, and then look in the fall or early winter to start really getting down to the nuts and bolts of, you know, where you can start. What kind of things should we start chasing money for, essentially?
And the other thing is, once you constitute, I would suggest that you ask them, have a couple of meetings where the public is available, because that can also then funnel, that can save you guys time, you're generally, when you're looking at their recommendations or adopting things. That part of that thing is, part of like the public comment thing that's in the state do, when they're managing a piece of property. All those comments filter in, and then it saves you guys time, so you kind of have a summary of kind of what's going on. Plus, like I said, if somebody, there's lots of opportunities, there's people say things, and if they don't, then we're a whole piece. That kind of, that adds a few things more. But again, it's really up, it really is your guys' decisions, your property, and whether you guys want to do that or not, it's wholly within your discretion or not, that's.
Yeah, and I guess as an example, back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, when we were doing the fuel breaks up the canyon and cutting the juniper's down, we had a fair amount of interaction with the public that would come up there from time to time. And that interaction was, man, this is great, how awesome it needs to expand upon to, why are you cutting a tree down? And those are the opinions that are within this community, right here that you live in. Land management is a very contentious issue, as you're probably all aware. So, again, this is for you guys, gals, committee. So it's not, I'm not saying that it's a necessary step, but it's just a recommendation, and maybe it would make your life easier, having something in place. And also maybe it also bring, you know, ten, fifteen more ideas to brainstorm the potential of projects up there, what could be done.
I'm all for the committee, I don't see the, this. But I think, yeah, sooner the better, and like I said, I mean, having the ideas of these other stakeholders is going to be great to to get their opinions on, on what approach we should be taking up there to help manage that. You know, what is public lands, all back in town, so. So sooner the better, would be my opinion, to get this committee formed and have a couple of games like suggested, to have the public aware of what steps we're going to be taking. Once this committee gets going, then you got to get a recommendation more, since we're all involved, and the agencies. Yeah, books definitely great. What steps should we take then, or are you saying that we need to advertise for this tree, or is it something that the mayor himself, or is it the council's?
I think this, I think this would probably, I think what you guys would want to do, I think even the makeup, I think you guys maybe, that's what I'm saying, I think you might want to have another meeting, and it's more like a public session type thing, with inviting specific stakeholders. And bring, and then bring them in, you know, make sure it's a time when you can get as many of them as possible. And then, you know, talk with them about, we're looking forward to this, you know, we're trying to keep the size like six or seven, you know, so that we've got a good cross-section. And, you know, and some of you different groups work with each other, you know, they're, just so, just so that it's a manageable group or something like that, because again, fifteen or twenty people starts getting, then the meeting lasts about three hours and you don't get anywhere, so that, those are just some ideas. I mean, it's, council's a pleasure, but, yeah, that's not a meeting, that's a convention at that point. Anyway, that, that's just the thought, plus getting fifteen, remember too, that you're, the more people that that committee has, we obviously wanted a cross-section, but more people it has, that's the more schedules you're going to have to coordinate for, if it's available, things of that nature. So you want to keep it, keep it a good cross-section, but also so that it's user-friendly and actually can generate some.
I would think no more than seven.
Right, and again, I suggest an odd number.
Yeah.
Five to seven.
And I think you need to look at kind of the user groups, you know, I'm speaking for the Department of Forestry, we are in a user group of Bullard Canyon. I would put us more in the technical advisor category than, and probably the same with OSU Extension and the Watershed Council. We would be coming to those meetings as needed to help provide some technical advice on specific sort of subjects or projects that maybe looking at. We'd be there to assist in seeking grant dollars and whatever that may entail.
And I, and I would definitely put as a town staff member, probably directly public branch or somebody, so that, because we are, it is our land, but we're also a user group, and there are things up there, you know, town water systems up there, stuff like that, so that just, there's some, so it doesn't get lost and shuffled, but there are parts of this that we can't compromise on because we can't risk water sources and things of that nature. So that way, it's kind of kept the nervous mind, oh yeah, let's put a grant run right over the top of the town's water supply string, that's probably not going to work, so those are some of, important other, yeah. And probably, and maybe a council member as well.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, so I guess we'll wait to hear from you all and.
Hopefully we'll get that done soon.
I want to invite people. So I think when you get to that stage of inviting folks for a work session to discuss this and form that group, if maybe we can be happy to come and just lay out an overview of what, where we've gotten from here a month ago to today, and where this may be going.
And I would recommend them, Dustin, backing is the other reason you want to have to do that, it's also informational. We are starting a planning process, what we're going to do with this, and this is why we want your input, you know, that way we're not planning without at least that being considered, I mean, you don't have to necessarily take, but at least you're considering it that way. So that way people, not everybody reads paper, not everybody watches, stay on YouTube or anything else like that, so stakeholder groups know why you're doing this, this isn't just an exercise or whatever, this is, we're actually updating our plans the first time in a day. So, that kind of helps people some context.
So, our next meeting is Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Is it too soon to call and just make a reach out to each of these and have a work session to start with, and just kind of lay the groundwork on this? Do you have contact for most of the people on that list already?
You know, I haven't seen the list since I produced it, so.
I'm not sure.
And it's not in my mind.
But I don't want to delay this at all, I just want to get it going, at least get it started and not, Tuesday's a week away, but it's for a quick hour, even less than an hour, let's just get it started and see who wants to participate. And then we can narrow it down, but reach out to each of these individuals, probably the top seven and that bottom eight or nine.
I would suggest that it may be better served for the town to reach out to these individuals.
Yeah, well, yeah, oh yeah.
Because it's not the Department of Forestry committee, it's your committee.
We just work to you, but I'm just saying if you've got the contacts already.
Yeah, and you need help with contacts or help reach out.
If there's contacts that you think would be, you know, we could, if you just give us the names.
And you guys probably all know your user groups and key individuals a lot better than I do. It's the folks that you're constantly interacting with, with anything to do up there, and who have expressed interest to you and really expanding upon stuff, so. Happy to help, I guess this is the process. Out of all of this, I see this advisory committee more or less, you know, the management plan, all of us are getting legs under it for you, this advisory committee is kind of for you guys to get legs under to help you out. But we're happy to help what we can. I propose that we get it three o'clock next week.
I don't even know what some of these initials are.
Yeah, that'll bet.
L C W M A, L C R.
Yeah, and a lot of those, so, you know, there's the weed.
Oh yeah.
Jason Yager, the weed, the Watershed Council, all of them here, and Casey with OSU. And I don't remember who else I have on. I still think that a lot of those are your advisory group, or not, not your advisory group, but kind of your technical experts or technical support to that advisory group, yeah. So, so we need to make our own list with like the Oregon Hunters Association, the cattle grazing, the. Yeah, I'm not sure that, I think we had a couple of names for the trails, but.
Yeah, Trails, or Mountain Bikes. High Gider, Guiding, Smallville Guys, you know, those kind of people, people that spend time up there, you know.
You know, the bike shop, I don't know, there's no real organized mountain bike trails, but is there somebody that's been talking about it? I don't know.
Yeah, probably.
Probably Tom Batty would be a good person, that, maybe even the Chamber of Congress from the standpoint of, once this, if they can take off into something, they may be very helpful in getting that information out there. Well, yeah, a lot of the committees that are dealing with stuff up there are directly through the chamber. The Trails Committee and all those are all boards of, well, there are some private properties that border us up there, so we should probably reach out to anybody that borders us. I can talk to Jessica at the chamber and see what groups that they're involved in that do have a can. Ski Hill will be one of them also. We need to find out if someone has a grazing project.
John O'Keefe used to, he still has property and he used to graze cattle.
He's got a park.
And I don't, I don't know who else does this.
I know his house are in there, I just don't know if he has a permit.
But you're very.
I believe there was something, it's a property there, so I believe there was, because we got some of that property, wherever we got the property from, that deal was that we gave them grazing, so yeah, that's another.
Yeah.
Exactly, because that's way even more my timing, but Daryl and I can, Daryl and I can put that up.
Again, happy to help wherever I can, and, you know, I think for the technical advisors' expertise, happy to reach out to those folks to come and participate and help lay out the things for this committee as needed, especially at the front end, and then we can kind of see where it goes.
Okay, would you be available at three o'clock next Tuesday, or less than that?
You're using up all my Tuesday afternoon. Jim Daley will do.
Okay.
He's all out of Tuesdays, so next Tuesday.
Yeah, that would be, that's cool. Not work for anybody else, reach out to people, anybody else you can think of, and then just get it. And then we can narrow it down after that, we just have a quick informational, kind of, table, you know, next Tuesday work session.
That would be me. Alright. Let's put in ten to the work session next Tuesday at three o'clock.
Michelle is. I imagine it's good if it came from your office, but we can all share contacts with you if you want.
Um, I'll spearhead it, and if I need some help, I'll contact you.
Yep.
Is that the word?
Thanks.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, and I'll touch base with Don probably on Monday, make sure everything's still good to go.
I'll just warn you, if it doesn't look like it's going to work out, I would check it next month, because we're obviously coming up on spring break, family, or being out, allowing you to travel and things like that, so that's. You don't get it done early this month, probably it's going to be April, just the way it works.
Well, like I said, I think it's one of those things that, I think there's a couple of months here.
We have a little bit of time. I agree with Arlo, like, who want to get wheels under the seat. I'll always be thinking to come up, so that's why we just.
Maybe get started or figure it out.
Is there anything specific that you want to set as a timeline to, is there, I mean, it sounds like for your part, you're going to be wanting to look more towards next year, and are you being ready for school and for the agenda with the school district, so you.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, most of the teachers have probably got their curriculum planned out for this year, so I'm not sure. You know, we got the MOU in place, but I'm not sure how much is really going to get done this spring. But I think going in for the planning cycle for next fall, for the next school year is good. I think the grant cycle autumn and November is September.
It's October and September, October, sorry, April and October.
April and October, so, you know, we had a pretty good idea that we're, everybody wanted to go by the end of the summer. That would allow some time to put in for a grant in that October cycle, which then you would see the dollars about the first of the year, I think somewhere in there, and be able to implement at the next field season of, you know, twenty twenty-one. So, I think everything's, I don't see really a lot going to happen up Bullard Canyon from, you know, new trails pushing in and new activities, trees hitting the ground or anything before probably. What about the, what about the timber cruising, we should plan on that for this summer to be on. Yeah, you know, if that's something the city wants to invest in, which I would recommend, I'd try to get that in that budget cycle to get it done this summer, just to give an idea of what.
Well, I think that's going to generate mostly revenue if we do it there.
I think, so all the upland stuff, the juniper treatments, some of the roads, right, you know, I think there's a handful of places that culverts need to be put in or replaced up there. I think there's a lot of grant dollars out there for those sorts of things. How would we go about finding out if we have a product up there besides the timber that can sell to Red Rock? I know they're going to be scrounging.
They are only, they aren't, it won't be juniper, the only thing that they're using is slash.
No, they can, they can take some juniper, it just depends, there's a lot of.
Majority, but they also, there's some, quite of an aging process that needs going on too, because it has to kind of build up a certain level of, so they want stuff within certain, because it has to cure to a certain amount, at least in the presentation that they gave to the Lions Club, is that they are looking for stuff within kind of an eighteen-month window after it's put together. Things like logical slash, things of that nature, so it is something that can be looked at. But remember, Red Rock is also, like I said, I don't even know how operational it is for the summer, I don't think it's going to lead in that direction. So, I don't know that I would count on much with them yet until they're up and going to have some other.
Oh, it's got to be seasoned for eighteen months, I should, I should be going in the next eighteen months.
But that's if it's already cut, it's not, so it's actually attached, we're popping slash piles, yeah.
Right, but if they go and log it, maybe this year for spring next, with the slash piles and.
That might horns over their time frame, absolutely.
Fennel. You have to do some fennel and some cleaning up of the underbrush there, and they'll be able to take a lot of that. So I think to Scott's comments, you know, the timber revenue is going to help drive a lot of it, but I don't think it's it's not worth looking at the grant opportunities, I think the grant opportunities are very large up there. Especially the, from a wildfire standpoint, off the edge of town, municipal watershed, it's a, it's a big deal. And I think I talked about the Forest Service and kind of our all lambs approach, and then from the North Warrens going out to the Thomas Creek, and the Forest Service's next large landscape, Nefah Project is the South Warrens after that. So, all going to kind of fit right in together about the right same time. Pretty optimistic, I think, you know, it's hard to sit here and say, in a year, we're going to see huge differences, but I think in five years, if you look back on where we are today, to where we are in five years, I think it's going to be pretty impressive, yeah.
And we obviously want to get in on that funding cycle at all possible, if you want to get programmed in with what, what on there, because earlier you're in, the better chance you have of getting funding.
Yeah, and so that's where I think, you know, getting this management plan to help drive some direction for, for that land up there. Advisory committee to help buy off on these projects and prioritize and provide input in combination with the resource professionals that can help chase those grant opportunities and help drive some of that process a little bit. And then also with the Forest Service landscape project, being in the South Warrens here in a couple of years, it's just going to take off, it's going to better, put your seatbelts on and your seats are, it's going to, it'll be pretty awesome.
Okay, one more thing, so sorry.
No problem.
Um, councilman, I wonder, do we wanna put on our agenda for the, somehow that has some dry campgrounds in spring, summer, or do we wanna push that into 2021?
I think we need to get the committee and everything up and going.
I think the campground is kind of at the bottom.
Yeah, I don't think it's that happened for sure, but I think that we need to get the committee and everything moving in the right direction and then look at that.
You definitely don't want some, you definitely, if you are gonna look at something like that, you wanna make sure that, like, if everything's treated or fitting them or something, you want that done first before you put something in so that there's not an interface between the two. So there's a lot of groundwork that you guys want to be doing first, just clean up, get it where you want, harvest stuff.
Well, yeah, I think that's where Casey's gonna come in to play a lot about it, with Casey of it, where she go. And when I talk to you next week, we can talk some more about that.
Yep.
Okay, just checking.
There's a land yourself there too that you can discuss with campground idea.
I can't hear you.
Well, the campground idea, there's an element, if we get a formal campground, I mean, dry campground can maybe be.
It'd be a dry camp.
Yeah, but I, I mean, it still may fall into that, it'd be implemented. You land use, and if that's the case, there's some rules about how close to land we go to that, you know that. At least two miles is good. And so we won't leave that on, with the stuff that we're doing, I think it's all within the market. It's close.
That's good enough.
It's close. So I'll look at that, Janine, and I'll just like.
Darrell, do you need help on that one? But I think Janine's gonna.
Without taking exception, you can do it, but then, except for that, you're talking kind of six months at a minimum of going through that process. And that's a county, that's county owned or county jurisdiction, even though it's town owned property, so.
Kind of the spot that, uh, Dustin, I looked at is where the road cuts off the, the dead trees. There's a piece in there that's pretty generally spooked and very clean there. It's kind of.
I'm, I'm all for more campgrounds.
You know, if you want, you know, actually there's a prize up there, I'll show you what it says, you have a better idea when you're looking at that remains.
Do we have anything else for Nelson? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Hey, you want to walk down, we should, focus number eight seventy, you all like.
So as we kind of discussed last time, we, I changed this one, so it's been effective date, beginning July. Also, it's got that, has the graduated penalty schedule. So ordinance, the way it works right now is to trigger, it's starting to be a violation. The first thing that happens is a, plane comes in, it's investigated, the town manager writes a letter to somebody saying, we've got X number of time to get this feed issue dealt with, because you're inappropriate feeding something. If they ignore it, then it turns into a warning, like, how do I get, would you get like a traffic ticket or a penalty citation that way? Then it starts instead of any data that's going on past any deadlines or set up a violation. So it ratchets up pretty quickly. But the, there's a fine schedule in there. It's basically adopted off of the standardized fine schedule for violations at a state level. So that's kind of what's been done and as you guys have kind of requested, this has effective date taken after, so that there's, you guys can give plenty of warning. So that's kind of what's been done. You guys, a change that could be made is you could just get rid of that second warning and have it go right from, it's either nuisance. And again, this also, this ordinance here has a full tool chest of suing somebody as a public nuisance. And if you get a real flagrant violator that's, you know, throwing out all kinds of stuff for the deer, if that's what the council wants, we can sue them or something like that, we can abate through other nuisance procedures. But this has a fine, I think primary, I, you know, enforcement will be fines, but there can be some abatement and stuff done. So you have a full tool chest, just like you have with any other nuisance issue as far as. And it either needs to be done to this one peace officer or whoever does nuisances or the town manager. So that's the primary thing that enforcement is all right now for it to get the town manager. So that's how this is set up. But otherwise, I mean, there's some roof beating laws, supposed to be cats, that's what the hell has, where bird feeders have to be enclosed. So some of those folks get to have those concerns, throwing out stuff on the ground is somewhat problematic. So, but some of those could also be constituting, if you throw a lot of rotten food out, that could possibly constitute just a straight up nuisance for, for torn out garbage and stuff like that. So you got some of that behavior you were hearing about. Plus, I would also like to mention three folks we had last week, none of them live in town, and it's.
Yeah, none of them do.
So.
Well, I, I put this on just so that if we're, so that we could potentially pass it or next week, right. Um, but, you know, at least we can put it into place and the ordinance and, and then as time goes on, we can modify it or whatever. But at least we've said, okay, this is kind of, this is it, we're doing it.
The only thing we're talking about changing now, according to what our committee said would be, a first violation would be a warning letter and then a second warning letter, which would require changing.
Yeah, we would, all we would do is we strike each one line, but it doesn't trigger until, but like I said, that's up to you guys. If that's what you wanna do, that is actually the process we follow with them. That is consistent, actually, with what we do for other ones, is there's two letters that go out in abatement. An initial one, decision by who will be abated, then one decision, abate will occur in ten days. So that is actually the process we're following, so. That's not the worst, being consistent is, I think, legally standpoint, is probably good, it's gonna quit and change the other one. So that probably, that's, that's our current practice.
I, I'm not opposed to that, it just, you know.
It does give a lot of folks a lot of chances to try to, and again, the effective date is, so they should get out there and get the point across. If this is something, again, there is nothing saying, there is no state law that says you guys have to do this. This is an optional type thing that you can enforce going on. So that's, it's really in your guys' ballpark as far as, it's something you're legally allowed to do, but it's not something you have to do. So it's a policy decision whether this is something to order us or not.
I'm okay with, I mean, is that kind of consensus that we wanna give to warnings? Darren?
It's not currently written in here, so I would mean that a change.
No, no, that, that is out there, it's written. If you go, if you look at five point two, person violating, violating five point one major, written notification by the town manager, required first removal of the name in three days. And then if they, if the person receives it, has to do that. And then if you go to enforcement or penalties.
I was just looking at that.
That won't even, that won't get triggered until that first initial three day period is passed, then there will be a.
Okay, I got it.
If, if the town doesn't use other abating procedures. I mean, again, you got somebody that's throwing out like, you know, twenty hay bales or something like that in their backyard. You guys can say, you know what, we're not gonna go do this with the fines and penalty. We're doing this, we're gonna go in there with an abating process to get rid of that. So, I mean, you still have the option. So I mean, it's really egregious or it's maybe, you know, twenty pounds of watermelon rinds out or something like that. So those kind of things can be dealt with, or you're, but otherwise, if the town is gonna go with, as a, as a violation, at that initial period period, then there is a warning letter, then the second one turns into a hundred fifty dollar fine, one sixty-five, two sixty-five, and then four forty.
Right. I'm fine. Okay, now I'll put it on the agenda and we will get it back.
I would also remind council, if that's what you guys are dealing with, then it needs to be, there needs to be a motion done to read it by title only. And it has to pass, that has to pass unanimously and then passed, otherwise you need to do two readings of this in two, seven meetings, have these forty days apart for our charter.
You'll remember that.
Okay, that's exciting.
Any, do you have anything else on?
If they are not in an enclosed feeder, yes.
What did you say?
It makes it illegal to feed birds.
Unless it's in an enclosed feeder, so like throwing out, peeing on the ground, quail, stuff like that.
Yeah, a lot of people really.
It all falls on the ground from the feeder.
But if it's an enclosed feeder, it, it first goes, that's not the issue. The issue is it's one that's not enclosed and thinking, yes, that is, it's currently written, that is an issue.
Yeah, but it's feeding the deer.
Just should we change it? Do you wanna make any modification on that?
Start with suggestion, drive your grandkids into making bird feeders, mares bird. Well, and then I don't know what the.
You're gonna be the first one, you're the picket.
Please. Yay.
Her daughter picks it up, I've got full, she brings it down.
Birds.
Well, what do you, it's, I guess the question is enclosed, how do you enclose it? By a fence?
The beater set, it's the type of feeders, you know, where they have to kind of peck in or things of that nature. So.
Up on a stand.
Exactly that.
Up there.
Yep.
Does it matter if your whole backyard is fenced in, so the deer can't get in anyway?
Usually, usually a chicken feeder.
Unless you're nearly peeking over your fence, I mean.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything else on this?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at four forty.